All this meeting of the commissioners to order for December 28th and note that Commissioner Bob Phillips not able to be with us, he had business and took him out of town, but he was participating via phone right here. And we'll begin our meeting, I will run the meeting in his absence and we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me with the folks on the line.
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the public comment. We want to note that welcome special guest Senator Gebhardt to our meeting.
Hey, I'm just a resident of Loveville. Happy to be here.
Thank you for joining us. Any comments or?
No comments from me.
All right. The next item is a new public comment. We'll accept the motion to approve the minutes presented.
Does he want to make all the motions when they're not way I cause so he can hear?
Bob Joel was asking maybe you want to make the motions. She can second. Okay, we have a motion, but.
Second?
Second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Mr. Dillan, floor is yours.
Good morning. We had receipts on December 26th and 27th of $1,054,980.17. That brings us to a total cash $1,736,803.84. We had expenditures this week of $1,323,424.31. The tax claim is $4,476.27. This is the balance of $372,903.26.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, the not the minutes, but the treasures report subject to audit.
Motion. Mr. Phil?
I'll take I'll take in the motion and find if Commissioner Lutz wants to meet all the motions, that's fine.
Okay. Motion is second. Any questions or comments regarding the treasure report? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say the signs. Treasure report is approved. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wogan, the cap floor is yours.
I'll first start with some personnel approvals. Seek your approval on these. Shell is off today and this has been the last meeting of the year and there were a couple more here that we could to clean up. First being resignations and terminations. David Julio, casual part-time court clerk in Clerk of Courts resigned effective 12/27/2023 and Alexis Resto, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, resignation effective January 4th, 2024. That's for your acceptance of those resignations.
What head commissioner? Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Shannon? Resignations are approved.
Changes of status, transfers and promotions. We have one and that is for Dalton Lovell to in the Department of Emergency Services to go from a casual part-time telecommunicator to a full-time telecommunicator at a rate of 2131 per hour effective 12/24.
I'll make a motion for Dalton Lovell on the transfers and promotions.
Second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any, Shannon? Changes approved.
All right, salary board for today. Moving on to that, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following for Caitlin Kissinger, probation officer one in probation services, a one-time longevity payment of $1,232.32. This is a retroactive longevity payment that is according to the court-appointed professionals contract, union contract that was approved retroactive to February, I think of last year. And this, this is just one person who in the list of all of those that were previously was missed, so we want to make sure we run this one through. As well, for Keith Whitting, who is a full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, has graduated from the academy effective 12/24 and would go to a rate of $20.62 per hour.
So, move.
Second?
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, I'll go to the 2024 county budget, which was proposed and put on the table on December 7th for the public to view or for any questions to be raised. And having been the 20 required 20 days on display, today would be the day for formal approval or final approval of the budget. And again, this budget is proposed at a point five mil increase from 3.8925 to 4.3925 for 2024, total budget amount being The only significant change to the budget since its initial adoption was the passage of the 911 fee of 30 cents from a dollar 65 to a dollar 95, which as you all know was passed by the legislature. That has resulted in an increase in funding for that, for the 911 operation of $245,000 for 2024. And that number is arrived by taking 85% of the 30 cent fee, which is what comes to counties. 15% of the fee goes to Pima to fund special projects or cooperation among counties. If they're maybe consolidating or sharing services, Pima has a, an allocation that they can use as an incentive toward those types of projects. And, and also it begins in March of 2024, so it's 10 months of the year due to the billing cycle that even though it's been reauthorized, it, it takes January and February for the phone companies to give them time to, to get the billing cycle going. At this point, the, again, $245,000 extra is, is less that the general fund has to put in for support of the 911 services. However, it's still approximately three fourths of that, well, I'm sorry, one fourth of, of that cost that the general fund is, is still funding. So, all in all, the, the budget leaves a a surplus of $480,000 going into 2024, which as I've characterized before is about probably about a day and a half of, of operating costs for the county. So, that's all. Answer any questions you might have on it that we didn't cover at the last meeting for.
Um, I'd, I'd like to discuss one more time, if I may, please, if he'll tolerate that, the bidding of prime care at the jail. I, I thought about this an awful lot because we are so tight and we don't want to raise the taxes more than we have to. And we're very fortunate because we've had some good things happen. The opioid settlement is covering a lot of the people who have been addicted and they're at the jail. They're getting treatment is helping to get paid. MH, mental health is helping to pay for treatment and the, the well span is, you know, they get paid for Medicaid and Medicare patients, but there's, and then on, I don't know the figure exactly that they're paying. That's going to come up, I guess, a little later. But so we're very fortunate to have those things going on. But while all that's going on and we're covering a lot of the care with those either dollars or donations, the prime care went up 3% and it's $3,537,682. That's about a quarter of the entire budget at the prison. And, you know, personnel, to put that into perspective, personnel is 64% at $9,912. So I just think putting it out for bid will keep everybody's pencil sharp and will help us with our budget and I'd really like to see that done. And so I'd like to make a motion to, and we also have a, the other thing I thought of, we have a, a request for bid out proposal out for cleaning the courthouse too. So there, you know, that one's being done, but I don't think we should be resistant to doing that with other areas, especially when this is a quarter of our budget for the prison. So I again make a motion to bid the prime care, bid the medical that's going on at the prison.
Okay. Motion on the floor is a second. Hearing none. John, I would, I would respond to you. As I said, for those of you who were not, were not at the last prison board meeting, Commissioner Lutz brought this up and we had brief discussion. Then I would reiterate, I would not be opposed to seeking bids. However, I think the first step is to establish RFP because what prime care is doing for the county long before I took this position, the county had significant exposure and was subject to a lawsuit and lost a lot of money because we did provide comprehensive services and that's one of the key things that prime care is doing. So before we accept bids, I would, I would welcome the opportunity to discuss a thorough RFP to, to identify exactly what we need before we talk about going out to bid.
And I did hear you say that, you know, I respect that, but there are examples of RFPs out there. We can contact our county commissioners association. They have some, uh, prime care might even have some with other counties. But there are RFPs that we would not have to start from scratch. So I don't think that that's a holdup for it. I really think that it could go forward with, you know, developing the RFP.
I disagree that if you have an RFP to present, then, then I think that's where we should start.
But that's not my job. Um, the job is to make the motion, pass it and then have Jamie research and get us an RFP and, and proceed from there. In my opinion, yeah. So we have a difference of opinion. That's.
All right. On. Moving back to the budget discussion. Any additional discussion before we get a motion on the table?
No, those, those are the things, again, I'm, I'm still trying to get the costs down so we, you know, have no tax increase or less of a tax increase.
So anyway, is there a motion to approve the budget as presented on December 7th?
Also motion.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Because I really don't, I don't think we did everything we could. And, and it's not, I mean, Jamie and Angel did a fabulous job, but I still think we need to get these things out for bid to keep a handle on that budget.
If I may speak to that issue itself, where there was some discussion again, as you mentioned, Commissioner Coon at last week's prison board meeting. Tom Weber, who you all know, CEO of, of Prime Care, who graciously attends all of our prison board meetings, even as the CEO of a large company that has a lot of jails under his, under his, under contract. When we first contracted with them in 2019, I think we were just around $3 million. And at that time, there were only two players in the industry. It was Prime Care and Wexford. Prime Care was chosen when it came time to renew that contract in 2022. We approached Mr. Weber and, and explained that at that time, the budget situation we were facing, which wasn't quite as dire as this year, but still tight. And they renewed for, for a 1% increase, even though the medical CPI for medical is typically around seven or eight percent per year. It's higher than, than the usual than the consumer CPI. That was for one year. So for 2023, he came back and negotiated a 3% renewal. And that's what Commissioner Lutz referred to. To me, those are reasonable renewals under the circumstances and in, in the environment. Uh, they also achieved for us during COVID an accreditation for correctional healthcare, a national accreditation for, for standards in, in correctional healthcare, which was remarkable to do that during a pandemic. Uh, so I think they did a stellar job of that. But the real issue, I believe, in going out for bid or for proposals on this is there are no other players. Wexford hasn't, has since left the business of doing it, doing healthcare for county jails. And while there are plenty of hospitals and healthcare providers, correctional healthcare is a totally different industry. I mean, you, you've got to place personnel inside the jail. Uh, the mental health demands are steep. The, you know, typically inmates will, will come with healthcare issues to begin with. Um, it's, it's, this isn't a, a criticism, but in general, it's just the nature of things that they are the healthiest individuals coming into intake because they have other issues in, in life, likely maybe drug abuse, alcoholism, those sorts of things that are presenting. So if, if we were to go out to bid, I don't know that we find anyone else interested in doing it, number one. Number two, those uh, reasonable increases that prime care have, have given us in the last two years may change. You know, if you completely open the door to a totally new number, prime care may come back and say, well, now we're going to give you a bid that is, you know, in in with the, with the, the price index of medical care. And we may end up having a higher number than we already have. Now, if there's a way to insulate from that and say, you know, we, we have the choice of renewing uh, at, at current, under the current contract, but if you're going to open up a whole new contract, then it's a whole new contract. You, you may end up just with one bidder and one number and, and no other choice. So, and that has happened. He shared a story where that has happened in another county that went out for bid and found no one, no one else but his proposal.
Well, I'd like just a short rebuttal, please. And that is that when the contract was originally bid, we had more than 500 inmates. We have maintained an average of 260 to 270 inmates. So to me, it's like we're being charged double what we should for the number of inmates we have. And, you know, and, and I'm just making that comparison by the number of prisoners. We never got a break. And yeah, COVID shots had to be given. But that was part of, it would have happened no matter what. Somebody could have come in from a drugstore and done it. But the point is, I still think that it's a hefty price to pay for 260 inmates. And that is one of the reasons I think we should encourage a bidding on this particular process.
Just one more comment to that. It's 260 populated is the average population. The number of inmates that go through the jail of a given year are multiples of that. So if you're dealing with, when you're dealing with patients, it's, you know, I don't know the number. I don't think that'll.
But we went from an average inmate population of over 500 down to 260 to 270.
Well, obviously I follow the direction of the board. I would just caution you that there aren't a lot of, it's not a lot of depth to the, to the pool of, of providers out there and that, I believe that can be risky. Careful what you ask for.
Okay, maybe even contact C cap to, to ask if they have a sample RFP you can look at just to explore it. On this one minute. Okay.
Or, you're hearing.
I just, do you, I, yeah. Do you remember just how many bid initially when the county ended up selecting prime care? You know, you talk about pool is whittled down.
I believe it was prime care in Wexford.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna have to go back and check to make sure of that. But those, those are the names that stick in my head. It's the ones that were, that were here.
And the other thing is the, the contract isn't based, it, it, it's not a per capita contract that you're, that they're charging you for. It's a flat rate whether you have 500 inmates or 260.
Right.
Okay.
Jamie, if you opened that bid up the process though, what's, who's to say that you have to accept that bid? You still have prime care on the original bid. That wouldn't change.
Well, if the contract's expiring.
If it's expiring, you wouldn't, I didn't know if Commissioner Lutz is asking to open it up now in the midst of it and explore it or what her intentions are, because you could still say, okay, well, that, we're just going to reject it and we'll stay with you at that.
Prime care could cancel their current contract as well. They can cancel with notice. So I, I, I don't know. Jim, that, that's what I, that's why I said, maybe there's a way to insulate from, you know, losing the current contractor in the process. I don't know. Okay. All right. Uh, then next I have an indigent care agreement that's been requested by Wellspan Good Samaritan Hospital. Uh, this is something that obviously they provide indigent care in this community and have for a very long time. The president Patty Donnelly has, has sent an email and proposed to me that they, they are requesting that the county pass this or approve this agreement that the, the hospital will provide healthcare to low-income Lebanon County residents who are not entitled to benefits under Medicare or Medicaid. And basically this, this will put in place an agreement that they can then uh, seek reimbursement for that and without the local government unit having this agreement in place with the local hospital, they're unable to do that. So I can try and answer any questions for you. You have a copy of it in front of you. I can read all or portions of it if you'd like. But that's the gist of it.
I do have a question. I, I, I understand completely the request for this contract. But the part that you don't understand is it looks like it's an old one that maybe we used from before because it says Good Samaritan Hospital and it should say Wellspan. Is that not correct?
Yeah. I could speak just for the record too. I, I've been employee of Good Samaritan Hospital in Wellspan for 38 years. Current status with the hospital is on a part-time occasional basis. So make that announcement for the record. Um, but the, as far as I know, the corporate name of the hospital has not changed. That's the way the hospital name has been filed. Uh, it's Good Samaritan Hospital. It is a subsidiary of Wellspan, but, but I don't believe the corporate name of the hospital.
But if they're going, it, I, I guess I want to make sure that they're not, that it wasn't overlooked. I.
I, we can, we can double check that.
Yeah. I mean, it, it just makes sense to me.
I read it. I caught my eye, but as far as I know, the corporate name has, has not changed in the filing.
This was provided, I mean, directly from Patty Donnelly.
I know. That's why I wondered if it was something that's just on file.
We'll, we'll double check, double check that.
Maybe you should put both there. Well, Good Samaritan Hospital.
Nothing new. The hospital actually since its original inception has provided care.
Yeah. I mean, it's a very simple agreement.
And it's just outlining that, that due to a, a new program associated with Medicare and, and drug pricing, uh, hospital would be eligible for discounts uh, if they can prove that they're providing care for this, that they, they are seeking uh, the county's approval in this agreement and to basically codify what the hospital has already been doing.
Okay. I will gladly make a motion to sign an agreement and just verify that we have the correct names that they don't get shortchanged when they go after the filing.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. I'll, I'll note also the county, the stipulation here, the county should not have any financial obligations under this agreement. So that all, or any other comments or questions?
So who, so Wellspan is asking the county to approve the agreement that they are providing indigent care to those that don't qualify for Medicaid. Who would they be pursuing for payment then?
Uh, presume Medicare, Medicaid, but this is designating them as the, yes, we find them a better currently official provider of indigent care, the provider in Lebanon of indigent care.
Okay.
Being recognized as that provider.
Any questions, comments?
Is there an income threshold for this? Do they?
The hospital does, does a, a screening process for, for people to determine their, their eligibility and meet that criteria, write it off to free care and bad debt. I, I think the average amount of free care and bad debt annually for the hospital is somewhere around $20 million.
Well, that, that's a good, is that, that's not just for inmates. Do you know what it is for the inmates usually?
They're not providing care for these inmates.
Oh.
Prime carers.
No, I mean, when they go over for Medicare and Medicaid.
Still want to follow.
If we have somebody that's needs hospitalization.
Yeah. Hospitalization, whether you need an emergency room visit, a hospitalization, whatever, free care.
Yeah. But how many of those are inmates? Any idea?
Oh.
No, no amount of money. I was just curious how much they do donate.
I, I don't believe they're donating care for inmates. I believe that's billed and prime care pays the bill. Which is then billed into our contract with prime care.
But if, if they can get Medicare and Medicaid, does.
In, inmates are not eligible for that, just as they're not for SSI while incarcerated.
That changed, didn't it?
Not to my knowledge. What you might be thinking of is that there was a time prior to prime care that, that Good Samaritan Hospital was billing the jail at Medicare rates. So they had agreed upon a certain rate to bill the county at Medicare rates. But there's, there's no, to my knowledge, there's no Medicare or Medicaid being that's funding, that's funding inmate care.
See, that changed. And so that was my understanding, but it, it wasn't clear that.
No, not to my knowledge. So, so the Medicare reference kind of years ago was the rate at which we were being billed was the agreed upon Medicare rate. They were, Good Samaritan was willing at that time to, to bill at a lower, at a lower cost.
Okay. Great.
Oh, so again, any additional questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Agreement is approved. Sorry, Natalie.
I have one more. Lastly, I have a liquid fuels matter. Uh, this is an application to encumber liquid fuels tax funds for 2024. This is to encumber $40,000 for the Red Rock Bridge, county bridge number one. the Red Rock Bridge, County Bridge Number One. It's located in Huddleburg Township. We've had a lot of discussion over this bridge over the last few years. It is slated to be replaced in twenty twenty four. And so what we would like to do is is have a set aside of forty thousand dollars out of the twenty twenty three funding that will carry to twenty twenty four for the engineering portion of it. The total estimated project cost is four hundred and fifty thousand. Again, this encumbrance requesting is for forty thousand dollars for engineer.
I'm moving.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I any opposed? There's no patients approved. Who else? Nope. There you go.
Certainly County Controller, Secretary of the London County Employee Retirement Fund. We're here for the purpose of passing some motions at the annual retirement meeting to set things in place for twenty twenty four. The first motion I need is a motion to approve the minutes of the December twenty second twenty twenty two annual retirement board meeting, which you received in your package.
Well, I will make a motion to approve. I'm sorry.
Sally moved.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. Okay.
Second.
I will second the motion.
Shouldn't second. Questions or comments? All in favor, could you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sign.
The next motion would be to approve the attachments of February sixteenth, May eighteenth, August seventeenth, and November sixteenth retirement board meetings.
On motion approval for since we've presented.
Second.
No. Not making the motion, asking for.
Oh, I thought she nodded her head to make it, but maybe I was wrong. Okay, then I'll make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Oops. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We're signed. Approved.
Then the next motion is to approve is the interest rate payable to the for the on the money that the employees have in the retirement fund. The rate in twenty twenty three was four and a half percent. And I recommend we stay at the four and a half percent for twenty twenty four.
Awesome.
Motion Phillips.
I'll second it.
Second. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any any opposed?
Then we need a motion to approve the class for the retirement system in twenty twenty four. The class in twenty twenty three was the one eightieth. And just by virtue of information, if we ever if we move the class from the one eightieth, currently it's the seven percent required. If we move it to one sixtieth, it becomes nine percent. So I recommend that we keep it at the one eightieth class for twenty twenty.
Make a motion to keep the one eightieth class.
Second. Motion is second. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just have it. Through.
Then the next motion would be to have Corn Ferry approve the green bar pension statements that go to the employees and members of the retirement fund for twenty twenty four, a cost of a dollar eighty five, a statement. And just by information, say that dollar eighty five is the same, pretty well had that same rate for the past five or six years.
Yeah, they're amazing to keep at that rate. Thank you so much.
They don't raise the price on us.
No, I'm very grateful. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Questions, comments? None all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
And the next motion would be to approve the refunds paid to former employees in twenty twenty three.
From no one. Second.
I think Bob was.
Yeah. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Through.
Next motion is to acknowledge the death benefits of members who died in twenty twenty three and the death benefits paid to in twenty twenty three.
Make a motion to pay the death benefits.
Second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay. Next motion is to approve the pension, the pensions of employees who retired in twenty three per the attached sheet.
Make a motion to approve the pensions of the retirees.
Shouldn't second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Tell it.
Okay, then the next motion is to adopt a resolution number one, which I attached to this. It's basically under the Secure Act of twenty twenty two, the IRS wants minimum re minimum distribution rules put into the plan, which generally does not affect our plan because the only time it would affect our plan is if a retiree or person who leaves the county is vested. If they don't take their money to a certain age. Angel and I looked at that. And at this point, we would not have any vested former employees that would fall under this rule till twenty twenty six. So it's just a matter of attaching this. Another one of those, the IRS wants it attached, even though it really doesn't affect our plan per se. So I just need a motion to approve that resolution. And then I'll have a paper for all the board members to sign.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Just have it.
There being no other further business, I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion adjourned.
Well.
Sally spoke up too.
Okay.
We can second adjourn with the Saturday, the retirement board. All right. Is there anything else to bring the order? If not, being our final meeting, wish everyone a happy new year and a healthy new year.
Definitely.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Bob.